On February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, Downtown Ford began the renovation project involving the removal of an outdoor canopy. On February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, the Louisville Metro Department of Codes and Regulations issued a stop-work order for failure to obtain a wrecking permit. As part of the process of obtaining a wrecking permit, the district's asbestos group was involved to review the project for compliance with asbestos rules. The district issued a request for information letter to Downtown Ford on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, seeking information about compliance with the asbestos rules. On April twenty-eighth, Downtown Ford responded to the request for information, reporting there had not been a recent inspection for asbestos. One public comment was received by the district during the written comment period. This comment and the district's response were provided to the board before today's hearing for the consideration by board members. The company has agreed to pay a penalty of fifteen thousand dollars to resolve this notice of violation. The district recommends the board adopt the order as written.
Thank you, Mr. Cabot. Ms. King, Representative James Collins Ford, ready to make a statement this morning?
Yes, sir.
Has any member of the public registered to make an oral statement?
We have a statement.
You? Has any member of the public submitted a written comment? I know there was one. Do you want to be read this out loud?
We have not done that in the past.
Very good. Are there members of the public in the Edison Room to which to make a comment? So please raise your hand. Seeing none. Are there members of the public that wish to make a brief statement on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference. You would be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants list or pressing star three if joined by phone and you would be called upon. Ms. King, do you notice anyone?
I see no rose-taken.
Thank you. Any or any questions by board members? Hearing done. This concludes the public hearing. I will now call the regular meeting of the Air Pollution Control Board to order. We are conducting the monthly meeting via video teleconference. I will call, conduct a roll call. Board members that are present on this teleconference, when I call your name, please say here. Jeffrey Coburn?
Here.
Candace Shove-White?
Here.
Marissa Neal?
Yeah.
Charlie Bell?
Here.
So John Jamil? Thank you. We have a forum. Ms. Hamilton, any introductions to that?
Not too.
Public recognitions to that?
A little later in my director's.
Thank you. I will move to approval minutes. The meeting, the minutes of the regular meeting held on March twenty, twenty twenty-four were distributed electronically. Review or any changes to minutes by board members? Hearing none, those are approved. There also were minutes for this, like the public hearing for American Synthetic Rubber was conducted on March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, which was also distributed electronically. Are there any comments from board members on those minutes? Hearing none, those are accepted as well. Moving to the public comment section, Ms. King, is anybody registered to make a comment?
Sir.
Has anyone provided a written comment?
Sir.
Are there members of the public in the Edison Room that wish to make a comment? If so, please raise your hand. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference and you would be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants list or by pressing star three if joined by phone and you would be called upon.
The members.
Thank you. This completes the public comment portion of the meeting. There is no unfinished business. Moving on to new business is the agreed board order to Downtown Ford, DVA James Collins Ford. The district has recommended the board adopt the agreed board order with James Collins Ford. Is there a motion to adopt the agreed board order with James Collins Ford?
Salute.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Marissa.
Is there any discussion by the board? Hearing none, we'll now take a roll call. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the agreed board order with James Collins Ford and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn?
Yes.
Candace Shove-White?
Yes.
Marissa Neal?
Yes.
Charlie Bell?
Yes.
So John Jamil?
Yes.
I vote yes. The agreed board order with James Collins Ford is adopted. Moving on, that no committee's met, so there will be no committee reports this morning. And we move to the director's report. Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you, Chairman Sol. Good morning, everyone. It's become routine now to start off my reports with staff. And this morning, I am very sad to say that Ben Jacobs, APCB's data analyst board mayor, will be returning to the U.S. Forest Service work that he did in Nevada. They called and made an offer and he couldn't refuse, and we understand that. But we want to let Ben know that just as the door was open to him at the U.S. Forest Service, the door remains open to his return here at APCB. So thank you for your work. He's been instrumental in helping us provide information to the public transparently through a series of dashboards on our website. We're grateful, Ben, thank you.
Thank you, Ben, for your service and good luck in Nevada.
We continue to post positions, and given that there'll be a lot of newly minted graduates coming soon, we hope that the board and others here will encourage people to look for postings from the district as well as metro government. Our budget process, which begins in early January, is nearing the final phase, but the mayor of Metro Council's public deliberations beginning soon. Once that's finalized, we can provide details to the board. Any questions in general about that? Yesterday afternoon, Assistant Director Michelle King and I met with Senior VP of Institutional Advancement Dr. Rick Smith and Vice President of Development Glenn Davis to talk about Simmons College's upcoming Simmons Fest and Health Equity Fair. This will be held at their campus on June twenty-ninth, and it focuses on connecting the community with Louisville's HBCU, prioritizing health, supporting local businesses, and learning more about Simmons College's educational programs and opportunities. And for us being able to share information about Louisville's air quality and our work is really a natural bid for the event, and also gives us a great opportunity to find more places where we can collaborate with Simmons and their students.
Is this new, or has that been going on?
It's been going on for a couple of years, but they're really trying to expand that sponsors, so they do have sponsorship opportunities available. Last week, the district's leadership supervisors and managers attended one of four US EPA environmental justice trainings for state, local, and tribal air quality agencies. Actually, it was all agencies, OMEGA, air, water, and waste. The training included the fundamentals of EJ, why it matters, history, social vulnerability in communities, community voices, and what can be done to advance EJ into our programs. These will be held throughout the year as part of our equity requirements for metro government. This is what we've offered to demonstrate our advancement of those principles. This isn't the only time we'll be discussing environmental justice and other topics with US EPA this spring. In addition to our regular meetings, it's conference time again. Next week, I'll be attending the Association of Air Pollution Control Agencies' Spring Meeting in Indianapolis, followed by Ms. King joining the National Association for Clean Air Agencies meeting in Philadelphia in mid-May. I believe both of us will be traveling to Atlanta in late May for the Metro for CSAR Conference, where we'll meet with ten southeast states, fourteen local programs in those states with EPA to discuss our grant funding, new regulatory measures, and it's a just really great opportunity to network with those peers. That's probably one of the surest signs of spring for us, is that we have all of these opportunities to travel. But it is truly finally spring. Seems like it's going to stick around for a while, and next week, the district will celebrate birthday with a pigeon salad fest lunch and other activities. We'll be tabling at a number of events coming up, enjoying some derby-related events, and gearing up to celebrate Air Quality Awareness Week in early May. Please, if you don't follow us on social media, I really encourage you to sign up now. Matt Mudd will be providing a lot of really good information then, but he already does that now. So if you don't follow us on social media, please do. Are there any questions?
No, not really.
All right. That brings us to the presentation portion. And with that, I just want to let folks know, I'm going to give you the title of this particular final rule. It's only as long as the rule is itself. Explain that in just a second. We're going to be talking about newly finalized New Source Performance Standards for the Synthetic Organic Chemical Manufacturing Industry and National Emissions Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants for the Synthetic Organic Chemical Manufacturing Industry and Group One and Two Polymer and Resins Industry Rule.
What's the acronym?
Uh, there's a lot. There's.
Great question, I'm sorry.
So we'll talk about some of those, because there's a whole bunch involved here.
NSPS.
Oh, NSPS, Nisha, Socme, the HON, and the list goes on. It's a flow by the blessing and curse that when it proposes or finalizes a new rule, before it goes into the federal register, they actually publish a pre-publication version. But the benefit of this is that it comes out in one and a half line spacing, so you can actually read it, because when it goes into the federal register, it's in eight-point font in column four. The current pre-publication version of this rule is nearly fourteen hundred pages long. It came out on April ninth. My colleague Karen Thorne here in our supervisor in our permitting section, and her staff, Matt and Steve Corbett's compliance staff, we're beginning to dig into this particular rule because it's doing a lot of heavy lifting. With that, I will let you know, one of the places that I first start in looking at any rule is in the required regulatory impact assessment. And their EPA goes through in great detail its basis for the decisions that they've made, and it includes really important assessments here. Risk of cancer from one of the six covered chemicals. But it also then evaluates both the greenhouse gas reduction potential of these rules as well as their ozone reduction potential. All very important things, because for the most part, we are talking about volatile organic compounds. Stop me if you have questions at any point, and then I'm probably going to reach out to Matt, Karen, and maybe some others, and if we don't have an answer for you today, we'll come back, because this rule has some profound impacts both here locally and nationally. In addition to covering a new source performance standard for an NSPS, as Dr. Coburn mentioned, this also involves national emissions standards for hazardous air pollutants or Nisha. We'll hear us talk about MACT standards, maximum achievable control technology standards as part of that Nisha program. And for those of you who are listening, I'm going to go ahead and just apologize with a baton that this is really tremendously complex ruling. I know how the community feels sometimes when they look at things we write, and we try very hard to write in a approachable way. This is not approachable. This is technically challenging to read. I have to get out a dictionary as I go through it. Also do, I expect, Chan Holley, our other industrial permitting supervisor. And so this is going to take us some time to read through and evaluate with respect to the sources that are here in Louisville. So bear with us. We are going to focus on one particular section of this rule, and that is the National Emissions Standard for Organic Hazardous Equipment Leaks, or what we call the HON. EPA's final rule requires plants to conduct fence-line monitoring in any of the equipment or processes covered by the HON. Use, produce, store, or emit one of six chemicals: ethylene oxide, chloroquine, benzene, one-three butadiene, ethylene dichloride, or vinyl chloride. And fence-line monitoring will be used there to measure levels of pollution in the air around the facility. Next slide, please. Next slide, Andy. Okay, so what we're really talking about here are federal air toxics regulations, and a lot of our work focuses on the criteria pollutants. That was Congress's starch G with EPA back in the nineteen seventies. EPA would set standards for particulate matter, which we talked about last month, ozone, which we'll probably be talking about next month, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, lead, and. Carbon monoxide. There we go. We spent a lot of time here developing plans to address those criteria pollutants. In nineteen ninety, Congress came back to US EPA and said, well, that this early part, the criteria pollutant part of this program seems to be going well. It's time that we focus on hazardous air pollutants. They produced a list of a hundred and eighty-eight of those hazardous air pollutants. They're also known as air toxics, or in our STAR program, which includes a few more toxic air contaminants. Congress and EPA set up a two-part system to look at emissions of hazardous air pollutants under the Federal Clean Air Act. And it's a two-part process. The first being a technology-based approach. That approach is not based on cost, it's based on the best performing group of those emitting sources in the industry. And then it has a second phase, and that is, once that technology has been implemented at a new or an existing facility, is the risk that remains of cancer or non-cancer acceptable? And just like with the criteria pollutant program where Congress put together a continuous improvement plan, set a standard, come back, review, evaluate, they did the same here for that residual risk portion of the Clean Air Act. Every eight years, EPA is required to come back and look at the residual risk that remains and determine whether that risk is acceptable. In this rule, EPA has done a bit of, next slide, please. I'm sorry that this is so small, but I will tell you what that slide represents.
Please.
Back here in nineteen ninety, Congress said, y'all got to get started on managing air toxics from sources of EPA. And it took a really long time for EPA to get that system up and running, much longer than EPA just gave. It's one of the reasons why we have the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program. Not only do our risk levels go beyond the federal program, but it was really taking EPA so much time to get that program stood up that our intervention and our mitigation is definitely warranted. I will note that, to the extent that the MACs were in place at the time of our initial West Louisville air toxic study, we still had emissions, including one-three butadiene. American Synthetic Rubber Company's Claire at the time actually set the technology floor for the polymer resin, resin source sector, but we still needed to go beyond to find a level acceptable in our breathing. This slide also represents something that now has changed. EPA proposed these revisions in June of last year. It's less than a year later, and this rule has been finalized. That's almost warp speed for federal rulemaking. I will tell you, I'm old and a bit jaded. I do expect that there will be lawsuits and challenges to this rule. We'll keep the board advised if those happen. It's probably more like when those happen, and we'll follow that along as it applies to our implementation of this rule. Next slide, please. All right, there's lots of stuff covered in the HON. It's not the whole facility. It's only certain parts of the facility that are in Eldar surface. That includes things like heat exchange systems, process vents, storage containers. Oh, but the leaks, that's pretty much it. Facility in the synthetic chemical, synthetic organic chemical manufacturing industry, or that Socme industry, will have thousands of components in Eldar surface. One of our facilities here in town, for various estimates between nine and fifteen thousand components in Eldar surface. And the leak detection and repair program that's part of the HON isn't a standard that we sometimes think of. Two-point-three-four, two-point-three-four pounds per hour is a numeric standard you'll find in one of our rules. Meet that on an hourly basis or an annual basis in your font. Go over that, there's a problem. But our air quality standards and our regulatory standards also involve work practices, and the leak detection and repair program is a very robust work practice standard. The revisions to the HON that were proposed and have since been finalized enhance that work standard revision. We'll talk about that here in just a second. Next slide. All right, we're talking about warp speed here. This was proposed a year ago. It got finalized a year later. That is really a tremendous. In terms of the lift for a regulatory rulemaking, this one's the size of a, you know, two-one-thirty Hercules. It's huge. And again, here we are. Next slide, please. Facilities are primarily located along the eastern seaboard in Midwest of the United States. This rule only applies to two-hundred facilities. That's really a very small amount across the country. These facilities, though, differ markedly in size. They differ markedly in places where there are multiple facilities covered by this rule, and they differ markedly from places where there isn't mitigation strategy like the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program in place. Next slide, please. All right. Thank you. Quick. Here in Louisville, our Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program has developed several layers of acceptable risk. For a single process, single toxic air contaminant at a facility, acceptable risk of the emissions there is one in a million. For the whole facility, all processes, all toxic air contaminants, if the facility was existing in two thousand and five, that risk is seven and a half in a million for everything. If it's new, or if that facility modifies, that comprehensive risk drops to three-point-eight in a million. US EPA uses a higher level of acceptable risk at the national level, recognizing that local interventions may be necessary and appropriate. There, they use one hundred in a million as a place where they step in to seek as much reduction as they can. The slide here depicts the risk that US EPA estimates from the sources that are covered by this rule. The blue representing their risk before the program goes into effect, and then their risk after. You'll see in particular, there's going to be some risk above a hundred in a million, in particular for two chemicals, one ethylene oxide, which is used in large-scale sterilizing operations for both medical equipment and for boot stumps, and the other is from chloroquine.
Can you see, so the orange here, so the blue represents?
Correct.
Current. And what's on the, and then the orange is the reduction.
Right.
So. And are those dates below?
Um, I don't believe so. I think those are, the first one says source category, and the second one says facility-wide, and the third one says community. So they did look at this for all?
Will they pull up, like in Jefferson County, roll up every facility to give the community another message?
Those that are covered by this rule. So they are looking at this not so much on a total community basis, while we did see them do something like that in previous rulemaking for the chlorofluorohydrocarbon reduction rule under the American Innovation and Manufacturing Act. That was the first time that we had seen them do such a kind of community-wide risk assessment. This is a different type of risk assessment, and we'll probably see yet again another way to look at it coming out of some other rule, as they try to figure out the best way to depict this. Thank you. Next slide, please. Here in Louisville, there were four facilities identified as potentially being covered by this rule out of the two-hundred across the country EPA notes. Some of these will not be required to do the fence-line monitoring. So we are being sure that we understand if all of our sources were only three out of four may be covered here in Louisville. And we'll come back and tell the board who is subject to this rule, and if someone is excluded, why that exclusion is. For example, they may not be covered under the HON portion of the leak detection and repair program. So as proposed, EPA would require fence-line monitoring permissions of these six chemicals: ethylene oxide, chloroquine, benzene, one-three butadiene, and vinyl chloride. For us here in Louisville, we do not have any sources subject to the ethylene oxide provisions of this rule, nor do we have any emissions now of chloroquine. We'll talk about those a little bit more in a moment. What you see depicted here in that kind of low-tech PBC cap is the actual fence-line sensor. For those of you who were here when US EPA's Office of Research and Development began their next-generation emissions measurement work here in Louisville, you may have held one of these low-cost air pollution control sensors. It includes PBC cap, kind of like you buy at Home Depot, and then some passive absorbent tubes that will be placed into the field on a tube recosis of the fence-line covered facility. And I do want to mention, you know, here in Louisville, the work that US EPA did was able to document this type of monitoring, which had previously only been used for benzene as part of the two thousand and fifteen refinery rule, was appropriate to monitor one-three butadiene and other volatile organic compounds, not with. notwithstanding other volatile organic compounds that may be in a complex air shed. So EPA has revised the method 325 to accommodate 1-3-Butadiene as a constituent with also the others listed here. And that is really credit to US EPA's Office of Research and Development. It's a credit to the facilities here in Louisville who worked with EPA as part of that project and also our own staff who supported and fueled. All right, everything there that you see is still true under the revised proposal. Companies will be placing these sensors into the field. They'll develop baseline if concentrations are above an action levels. They'll have to find the root cause and they will have to fix it. That's already part of the Eldar program, but it includes enhanced timeframes. Monitoring data will be submitted to EPA every 45 days and that will be made available to the public by US EPA. So again, that's a good transparency issue. When we're talking about somewhere like La Plaques, Louisiana, they have 80 large Title V companies, many of them who emit ethylene oxide and one that emits chloro. This rule is going to have a very profound effect. Next slide, please. Because you're going to get a little bit difficult to see. I'm going to come up here on a little handy notes and I'm going to point. All right, this is benzene. It represents Jefferson County. The green represents all of. These are years of importance here in Jefferson County. It starts with 1999 and 2000. That's the time period that we were conducting the original West Lovable Air Toxic Study. 2003 is when the STAR program was initially proposed, adopted in 2005. Regulatory requirements for existing facilities took place in 2019. And then finally, 2021. Benzene has stayed relatively consistent in Jefferson County and mostly so at the state level. Next slide, please.
Where are these facilities out in the state? All over or mainly on the highway? Do you know?
Well, when we talk about the covered chemicals here, 1-3-Butadiene, vinyl chloride, twenty-six pounds of chloro, ethylene dichloride, and even ethylene oxide. There in Brandonburg, Kentucky is the ethylene oxide source. And then all those others are in Calvert City and Marshall County. 1-3-Butadiene, the blue is Jefferson County. You can see here at the beginning of that West Lovable Air Toxic Study that we had close to 250,000 pounds of 1-3-Butadiene in our air shed. In 2000, that dropped down to about 180,000 pounds. When STAR was being developed, about 143 clients started the STAR program in 2005. Seventy-two thousand pounds. And since then, less than 5,000 pounds of 1-3-Butadiene. That is due to companies who reformulated their operations to reduce their amount of 1-3-Butadiene used. That we had three emitters here in Louisville, some who were able to eliminate it in total. And another company who added on a Flare thermal oxidizer in support of their quarter. And that is what has gotten this tremendous reduction. That's a very innovative move. This new rule that EPA has finalized requires Flare thermal oxidizers for other emitters to put on today.
Did all those businesses stay in business during the period of time?
These did, absolutely. And again, companies here in Louisville took the lead and were innovative. The Flare thermal oxidizer ASRC went in through a enforceable board order, not an enforcement board order, draw distinction, in 2006, went into operation. And so you see here this did between 2005 and 2009. And that's because their Flare thermal oxidizer is incredibly efficient at destroying 1-3-Butadiene. Next slide, please. This is chloro. Chloro is used in the manufacturing of neoprene rubber. Here in Louisville, neoprene was manufactured as part of the World War II effort by Dow and Fontolastors in 1999, 512,000 pounds, 2,579, 2,3482, 2,005, 414. And then in 2008, the company consolidated their neoprene rubber production operations with a facility in La Plaques, Louisiana. And so they ceased production here in Louisville. Their last full year of production, they had 472,000 pounds of chloro. When the West Lovable Air Toxic Study was initially done, chloro had been identified as a carcinogen by the International Association for Research on Cancer for IR. But US EPA had not yet agreed that it was a human carcinogen. As a result, it was identified as the non-cancer driver during the West Lovable Air Toxic Study, but it was discussed as a potential carcinogen. In evaluating it, the cancer risk, the risk assessment associated with the West Lovable Air Toxic Study indicated that it was nearly 20 times higher than cumulative risk at the highest site. Next slide, please. This is 1-2-dichloroethylene, also known as ethylene dichloride. You'll note it's only green. We actually did have a nominal amount of ethylene dichloride reported here in Jefferson County, about eight pounds a year. So it really does come up on the scale. These emissions in 2021 jumped to 53,000 pounds and that's primarily in Calvert City. There is air monitoring that has been done by the Protective Division for Air Quality and US EPA that recently identified emissions of ethylene dichloride as the risk driver in Calvert City. And so that community is now looking at how to reduce the risk, which in some cases is about a thousand in a million at some of the monitoring sites for a more acceptable risk. Next slide, please.
So I'm sorry, so we're basing it Jefferson County versus like the rest of the state? Is there anything that says, like you say, Calvert City, they have this huge amount there? Is it something that is more like a personal based off of population? Because it seems like Jefferson County is more densely populated than the other counties in the state that we're being referenced to?
So population size can come into that risk assessment factor.
Okay, that's okay.
They can. Where we really differ from, you know, how the state may look at it is that here in Jefferson County, you have the authority to be more stringent than state law or federal law. Whereas the state can't be any more stringent than federal government. So they're looking to reduce that risk below a hundred in a million is their ultimate goal. But there's no bottom end like we have in STAR. Ethylene oxide, again, we don't have a source here in Jefferson County that's covered by this rule. This is resourced through Brandonburg, Kentucky. What we will say is that when US EPA does that sort of community risk assessment evaluation, the national air toxics assessment through NADA, we see a contribution of risk here in Jefferson County from emissions of ethylene oxide in Brandonburg. So we're looking forward to that reduction taking place outside from Jefferson County and will benefit from. Next slide, please. All right, and this is vinyl chloride. We've talked a lot about vinyl chloride over the years. With the food reach, there was a very unusual type of cancer called angiosarcoma identified in vinyl chloride workers at that facility. Here in Louisville, they've taken great pains to have very low emissions. And what you can see is even with that low emission from 1999 to 2021, their emissions have continued to be reduced. At the state level in 2021, those emissions were 116,000 pounds. In Louisville, they were 1,100 pounds. They have, however, worked with US EPA and the state to enhance the Flare that's used at the facility there to better reduce vinyl chloride and any of the there. So that will likely go down because that work has already taken place. And I see that in the emissions inventory going forward, but this new rule too will help. Next slide, indeed. All right, so this really brings us to where we are today. And for EPA, one of the biggest things they did for the companies that emit everything but chloro was extend the deadline from one year to two to begin that fence line monitoring. The rationale for doing that is because they're going to be need for the companies who will receive those little passive samplers and then analyze them. There's a need for that industry to be ready to accept the workload that is coming their way. And so EPA has given those independent labs a year to get ready to go. Companies that don't emit chloro will begin monitoring in two years. They'll establish their baseline, which is their actual level will be a delta between their highest and their lowest annual emission and an EPA safety factor. And then they'll begin monitoring going forward. EPA also included some burden reduction for those companies. If after a certain period of time, I believe it's two years, if you show that your emissions are one-tenth of your delta and then safety factor, then you may not need to continue monitoring. That's very similar to what's already in the existing Eldar program. I'm sure the companies will change that. Chloro is a totally different issue. Chloro, again, we looked at it as a carcinogen during that West Lovable Air Toxic Study. EPA has now agreed it is a carcinogen and developed a unit risk estimate for how risky it is to inhaler. It's pretty risky. US EPA is trying to reduce emissions in La Plaques. Now, the only source where it's been here in the United States in significant amount that are 42,000 pounds on an annual basis. The risk there is well over a hundred in a million. To put that into context, the emissions here the last full year of the company emitted in Louisville, there were 472,000 pounds. Because of this risk, EPA has said these companies have to start monitoring in 50 days once the Louis finalizes. So that is a important change for the folks who live near the facility in La Plaques. And again, they will then need to set up their baseline, monitor against that baseline, root cause and corrective action when they exceed that baseline. That's the best I can tell you after reading it as much as I can. Aaron and Shannon, DJ, do you all have more to add? Steve, Matt? We are still in the process of reviewing how this will be applied to companies. We'll likely have a lot of discussion with US EPA and the companies as we all have a chance to dig a little deeper. We'll come back to the board if we see a lawsuit. Are there any other questions the board would like to have answered?
Questions, you mean? I mean.
Thank you very much. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Moving on to the reports that were just air quality reports and other reports that were distributed electronically. The question, I have a question on the PM 2.5. Are we now getting all the data as adjusted for groups? The correction factor?
Yes.
So from now on, that's, that's been it. So the trend, the new number is a nine.
Data going forward.
Data going forward will all be adjusted since December of 2023.
But not the older data.
Okay. And then the new standard is nine?
And that will be effective in May 6th. So you will see.
Like a month?
Yes. So you'll see in the May board report, an adjustment, the new standard of nine micrograms per cubic meter from 12 micrograms per cubic meter. With respect to the data adjustment, we are in the process. US EPA has, as part of this rulemaking, decided to apply the adjustments that we're talking about here. Those are our T640 continuous particulate matter monitors. They have been adjusted with their software to take into account temperature data in a more robust way and other corrective actions. For our previous data, US EPA is part of the final particulate matter National Ambient Air Quality Standard will be applying a correction factor for temperature to the 2022 through 2017 data set. And now that's retroactive. And so we expect to see a reduction in those boundaries as well. We provided US EPA with our temperature data, or we will complete that by May first. We will be presenting the 2023 monitoring data to US EPA for final purposes then in certifying its data validity. But we'll also be providing them with nearly seven years worth of temperature data. They will then correct all data acquired during T640 continuous monitor nationally, either using site-specific temperature data or a default temperature value.
So the effect of temperature is what? Is it worse when it's cold? Does it affect the norm when it's hot? That was the adjustment. By elevating the number up, presumably?
By elevating the number on average.
On average.
So we've seen in some of the data work that US EPA has done, that the difference between those T640 with the federal equivalency method and the federal regulatory method, which is a gravimetric method, that there can be as high as a one to two microgram per cubic meter bias high in those T640 continuous mission measuring equipment. We're happy to come to the board next month with a more detailed explanation. We'll have turned our data in. EPA is going to correct the data. It's our understanding that we may have an opportunity to review that data before EPA publishes it. But we will be able to come to the board and generally talk about the difference in the federal reference method to the federal equivalency method, what our own documentation has shown with respect to the bias, and then some of what EPA expects will happen to that older data set.
Well, and then how it impacts what we do going forward? Because are we going to, we're going to exceed nine?
So a couple of things.
Is it anticipated?
We have a requirement under the Clean Air Act to have a recommended designation by May of 2024.
Next month?
No.
How about six?
Twenty-five. May of 25. I'm sorry, I'm thinking 23. Right. So the state will complete that designation based on the 2021 through 2023 data set. This data set does include the issue T640. It also includes some data that may be subject to an exceptional event demonstration for the high particulate matter contribution that we saw with last summer's wildfires. And I want to be clear. And I want to be clear, data that may be excluded under an exceptional event demonstration is not something that the district does on its own. It requires us to provide to USC PA a very detailed and technical scientific demonstration contribution that may have occurred here. We will be letting the next few days in RFP for a third party to come in and help us make that demonstration. There will be public notice of that here, and then of course, USC PA will do its own evaluation of that scientific demonstration. And if they concur, some of that data in that 21 to 23 data set may be excluded and further drop our design value, either closer to nine or just slightly above nine. Now, EPA will make a final determination on an area's designation based on the 2022 to 2024 data set. So our picture today may improve. 2021 was particularly IPM year, and that data set will fall out, provided we don't see any additional contribution from wildfires this year. Our 2024 design value hopefully is below nine. So it's a process, and we'll have to walk through it all together. When we let the RFP and we have information, we will share that with the board.
All right, is there any questions from board members on reports? The rest of them are pretty straightforward.
Well, just on this matter going forward, is the adjustment going to be made in the same way by EPA? Or are those monitors going to be somehow modified?
So they've already been modified. The software for the T640s, as Brian explained, as of December 2022, 2023, I'm sorry, 2023, have been modified to take into account the appropriate temperature and corrected factor. So going forward, the data will require no further adjustment, except possibly, I'm looking at myself, sorry. If we have an exceptional event this year due to wildfires, then we will need to go and do a second exceptional event demonstration, which is going to be tight, given EPA's requirement to find an area and designate an area by 2026. We can get a one-year extension if EPA is willing to grant it. But that's entirely at their discretion.
Okay. Any other questions from?
Just one follow-up question. Has the adjustment procedure been verified or certified in any way by this agency or the EPA?
So the USC PA developed this correction factor. It was proposed as part of the particulate matter National Ambient Quality Standard that was recently finalized. So their methodology and their rationale for doing so were proposed and to comment on it, and they have subsequently finalized it. That's where that change going forward has taken place.
So I guess what I meant then was, was there a study done where they compared that with the?
Absolutely.
The reference.
Absolutely. And Brian can probably talk a little bit more about that. So agencies like APCD provided data to USC PA. Brian, do you want to?
So any instrument that is being proposed to be used for next compliance purposes goes through evaluation process by EPA to be considered federally equivalent to the FRMs. This T640 went through that process several years ago, and then this updated algorithm went through a similar process by the EPA Office of Research and Development over the last year or two.
Okay.
I want to thank Brian, who is our air toxics and data analyst supervisor for stepping in today. The whip is out this morning. But Billy leads our quality, I'm sorry, Brian leads our quality assurance part of our air monitoring team.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on those reports? And you're all. Okay, before we adjourn this morning, I wanted to remind those in attendance at the NS room. If you have not signed your name to the attendance sheet located at the table, if you snuck by our sentry chair over there, please do so as you leave. This will aid in establishing a complete and accurate board record. We'll now adjourn, adjourn this regular meeting, and thank you for your participation. The next meeting will be Wednesday, May 15th at 10 a.m., 2024, not 2023.